Yeah.
Maybe another couple of days, somehow we're getting by. Millage, election issues. Okay, the background, we all know, we're really getting so much revenue coming in, expenditures are having trouble making those lines cross. We also have a police millage that's expiring and, it expired in December. So, the way that works, we have to let it expire before we can renew it. Because if you have two running concurrently, that becomes an additional millage. If you let it expire and then bring it up to the voters' end, it becomes a renewal. It's just the way the terminology works. So, how do we want to begin this discussion?
I can just kind of go through the handouts right, everyone did, we did the handouts, right? Basically, you know, we do know that we have to have an election. So, I know during budget time, we started looking at general fund and some ways that, you know, we keep going into fund balance. And I know some people, you know, it's an issue that we keep going into fund balance to balance our budget. So, I know we had some discussion. And over the years, we do so, there is one police millage. If you look at this little schedule, it has been talked about a while that these police millages and general fund millages renew every year. It's like, it's always a renewal, it's always a renewal. So, we're like, can we research and see if we can actually put those in one pot so we don't have to keep renewing them every year? And so, we pulled within the packet or just some options, the different millage options that we could put on the table, some were easier and some less easier to explain the residents. So, that's where this whole conversation kind of started. So, I did some research, we knew it, like I said, we knew that for sure on the ballot, we'd have to put the police millage of the one mill that had just expired. So, that was a given, we were going to have to let the millage anyway. So, then Sharon says, "Well, it's expensive enough, the millage, do you want to do something else? Do we need to do anything else to get out of the millage for just one question?" So, then, that's where this kind of came on in the budget process, that, you know, do we need to look at this stuff? So, the second page would just be the renewal that would go on the ballot. Same as always before, we've just changed the year and do another five years. So, we look at that. So, what started then is this whole conversation is, so that's just any questions on just, that's just a renewal plan, we'll go on the same ballot, same way. So, there will, for sure, will be one millage question. So, next, what I did is, kind of, I was doing some research and I found, we're not going to go through their example, but I did find out an example, one hour we talked about, one thing we do a Headley, a Headley override. And that would be voter of the people to, if they wanted to do a Headley override. And you get to the question like, is, why do we need a, why, what do we need more money for, why would we do a Headley override, what would we do? How does it affect the individual, how does it affect the voter? So, I did find a newer example, it was just a kind of thing from Auburn Hills. So, Auburn Hills did one for the public sector. So, I didn't actually, and I kind of thought, okay, let me explain that by doing, kind of following their example, like, why would, first of all, why would we leave this and why are we here? So, actually, I went back and I thought, you know what, I don't have enough history here. So, just today, I went back and did what our allocated mill has been and where it's gone to. So, I wanted to include that because I didn't even realize... So, basically, what are allocated mills, if people aren't familiar with it? That is by law, the only mills that we are allowed to assess to the taxpayers. So, on day one, when it opened, we were allowed this allocated mill because we have a police department of 1.85 mills. So, over the years, what we call Headley, that's how they run it, is proposal A, that taxable value could not go up more than inflation. So, when they put this in the law, so what they would do is actually start reducing the millage that we...
Let me give you the expanded, expanded version. Headley was passed in 78. It was combat taxes rising, property tax primarily, rising faster than inflation. And the idea was not to allow people to be taxed out of their homes. And that worked as a standalone mechanism in the Constitution for a while. But then, instead, they needed to tinker with school funding, center of the lottery, all these other machinations came in. Proposal A was passed in 1994. Proposal A, remember, went from 4% sales tax to 6% sales tax. Property tax has no longer funded schools. Now, the state, that extra two cents on the dollar is now most of your school funding. And then, you hit your statutory and your constitutional revenue sharing is all taken out. Constitutional is pretty simple, but the statutory is a Byzantine calculation that, I read Public Act, whatever it was, in 1998, and I was just, my head started hurting at about page three. But the constitutional is pretty firm, 15% of the, some portion of, but it's formulated pretty simple and it's based on per capita. So, we have X number of people, we get X number of dollars. Statutory is a mess, we'll never figure it out, we can't count it. Headley now and proposal A work in tandem and against each other at the same time. Proposal A had more ramifications, we all know, as we look at taxable value versus state equalized value on property taxes. Proposal A says you can go up the rate of inflation to 5%, which is, whichever is lower. Problem is, it's not really a problem, as I go, and I call them the hostage sessions again. We have done a pretty good job of keeping our property values up, and our property values are increasing. People are buying and building homes on gross yield, which should add significant amounts to our revenues from property values. As those home values, those taxable values on the homes go up, Headley says, "You're taking in too much money, we've got to roll back your other millages because you're exceeding the rate of inflation." Well, nobody took into account in 2008, well, actually, 2009 and 10, as property values plummeted, they were way below the rate of inflation. There's no mechanism to make that up because nobody had the foresight to think, you know, what the realtors say, "You can never lose money in property." Well, yeah, you can, and every community in Michigan did. So, that's where we are, and I try to, we get a new legislature every two years, and because of term limits, we got a bunch of new people that have no idea what history they're inheriting. Headley has to be fixed. If you went, I was down at the State of the County Warren Evans, gave the same hostage session speech. We need more taxes, we need local income taxes, where the townships can't levy, we need to increase the state sales tax, we need liquor taxes, and raise taxes, raise taxes. Get Headley out of the state constitution, we can solve our own problems. So, that's kind of your mini lesson, and if everybody wants to see the formula on state revenue sharing, if you can break it down to clear text English for me, I'll buy you lunch, it'll be worth listening to.
So, yeah, so when I went back to the history, it was kind of, you know, I'm like, whoa, this has happened like in the 90s, right away. Like, our first, our last time that we actually collected the 1.5 was in 1985. And it's been going down ever since. And I highlighted the years of when actually SEB actually took a dump. So, it was increasing, 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 until like 2008. Then it started to even come down lower, and now it's starting to go up again.
Did you notice Headley didn't let us recover that, stay right there?
Yeah, once it went down...
Headley only goes in one direction.
That's right. So, and I have provided just a general fund outline, but I've also provided the taxable value. So, on this chart that's here, so we're at 2004, you know, just like these are, started going up, started coming down, and started going up again. So, we're back to 2004, in the schema thing, of where our taxable value should be. If we look at the general fund, you know, since 2012, we've been going into fund balance. So, in 2012, the overall numbers, huh, we've been going into fund balance. So, in 12, this figure 12, it was 247 negative, 13, it was 93 positive, 14, it was 26 positive, 15, it was 34. So, in those three years in the middle, we kind of kept, you know, kept close. 2016, we were 264 under the year we just finished, we budgeted 190, I don't hear those numbers yet. And then again, we budgeted 2018, 244. So, we have been going into fund balance. So, what this will do is basically, if we go from the calculation taxable value to 2017, we see that our allocated mills dropped down to 1.2585, which brings the estimate to 741,000. If we go from those to roll it back to what's allowed under township, it's 1.85, that bring in over a million dollars. So, our difference would be like 0.6 mills, about 348,000. So, if you can see, that's about, on average, where, you know, good years, bad years, but there's our, there's our amount. When we went up pretty additional, and we know that the police millage that we recently went up with, we knew we bought about five years, just based on costs and based on everything. And here we are again, with five years, just because our value, it wasn't because of taxes, it was because our values were so low. So, we're starting to come up, but obviously, we're not coming up half as fast because, as Brian said, this is, this is actually, you know, slowing down everything, we're just not building up those revenues by tax revenue because we just can't close up, that's our block. So, Headley came around, it was probably big in the last four or five years more than communities did it. So, we're falling, we're actually saying, okay, we need help four, five, six years later. Where everyone was saying, no, we need to do this several years ago. So, what this does is provide, so the difference is about 348,000. Average household would cost a taxpayer is about $74 a year.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. President? I don't argue what's going on with the personal ownership of the state. I understand the property values here, but now, that means that you can take a solid percentage of whatever tax rate against the lower base, you can do this much. Then it can rise rapidly, it could rise 10%, but you're only allowed five taxes with Headley. Am I correct?
Proposal A.
Yeah.
Proposal A.
Is it three or five?
Five.
Five.
Thank you, now, stay with me, please. So, I understand that portion. Where I fall apart is I don't understand how this allocated millage goes up and down, we have some control over it, and yet, it seems to be a different amount of percentage.
It goes down. It's a Headley rollback, it's formulaic, if our, and it's assigned by community throughout Wayne County. Every county has it, it's part of county taxation program. But the county says, your community, you can hold, you can only capture 0.98 of your increase in property value.
Got it, so you couldn't get the full 5%, you're going to get 4.2...
Oh, we can get it on the property values, but then, our other millages get ratcheted back. That's why the general allocating...
So, in terms of the total pie, is it...
Right, it's kind of a wash.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, and you can see by that list, it actually shows you that it's just constantly been going down. It's, you know, it's not going up, it's been going down since 1900. So, even though our SEB goes up, it's, it just keeps going down.
When our SEB went down, Headley did not let us capture more of our, of our general allocation millage. It's a one-way street, and it doesn't work.
I was thinking something similar to that.
Yeah.
And in the last 20 years, what's the average inflation? One, two, 3%? No, it's 2% over the last 20 years of inflation, it's been about 2% since then. So, it'll never catch up to itself. So, there's my chart. So, that was in simple, then we started looking at, you know, our big costs, and Brian said, hey, kind of throw this together and see where we are as far as, you know, pensions and healthcare. So, I just did a little sheet to build up the next two pages. It kind of says that if we take, this is, what we're doing is saying, this is general fund, including the police department. It's helping you obviously know we're one and only, we can't separate the two, and we'll show you why we can't separate the two in the next part of this explanation. But, so, basically, it says that, you know, our, in total, we go through all this, it was a fancy way of making a lot of little numbers so you guys don't see them. And in the end of the day, average per total year, total, you know, total for general fund, it's possible that salaries and wages, on an average, for the last five years, raised 122,000. Not saying it will, not saying it won't. There's a lot of factors that, going to pension and healthcare, that changed that, just on an average. So, what I kind of did in the example, okay, so if our taxable value is 589, it would raise, so it would raise, if we, if it increased 1%, 1% of general fund taxable value is 34,000, 2% is 69,000, and then increase in 3% is 1.4. So, even that, in best case scenario, will we be close? Yes, we'll be close to that, that running of operations. And the last couple here, they said, running of operations is not our issue. Our issue is fixing a building, a new roof, cable equipment, the election equipment, it's all these demands on us for maintenance areas that we cannot cover in our general fund operations. So, the argument is, do you go into fund balance for that, or do we correct the issue and not continue to go into fund balance year after year? This year with the police department, overtime was $100,000 more than nor, or not, $90,000 more than normal. We didn't know certain circumstances come up like that, that's why the fund balance is there. So, there are things that come up, I mean, you guys have all been here now, that things come up that, you know, we don't budget for, and the unexpected. So, that is, that is one scenario of what we went into regarding the Headley, Headley override. And then I want to spend some time on the other scenario, which was, okay, by law, the township has the ability to pass a special assessment, PA Act 33 of 1951, that it would allow the township to assess up to 10 mills for police and fire. As a general township, we can do that, it still has to be voted on by other people, which we looked into. We thought we could assess it without, with just township board approval, when we assess the levy, but we found out with further research that it's a very complicated issue to have the residents actually vote on it. So, what you would do is try to tell the people that we're not going to assess any general fund mills. We're going to assess, if we look on this next page, to operate our police department, we would need, I can go in this very, you know, we can get some explanations, so you can see the complexity of what would happen here. Currently, we are running on 5.9 mills for general fund, which raises 3,477,461. Everyone follow me?
Yes.
Of which the police budget is 3.3 million dollars. So, in the first year of this millage, is how you'd have to explain it as a special assessment, that we will levy a special assessment for the police department. So, now we can separate the police department and general fund. So, we could levy 5.65 mills for the police department, and then, and then we could have the township, which is the general fund operations, in the first year, a 0.25, because that would create our total revenue to operate both police and fire. So, we'd have, they, we'd have to assess the allocated mill, and then we'd have to do the police questions, which is a special assessment, which is just a general, general operations. So, the police would need the 5.651, and general fund would need, in the first year, the 0.25. So, we wouldn't levy, so we'd still levy the same as what we had before. However, now, no longer would any board, our future board, ever have to go back to the taxpayers. They could levy, on their own will, a maximum of 10 mills. They could levy back to a maximum of the 1.25 mills. They would have that total authority to do that on a year-to-year basis, levying what is needed for the township without over...
Excuse me, are you saying, basically, you're basically saying escape and pass this general fund, a 10-mill range, you take the $4 million roughly, put it into that millage, that issue formulated spent someone away. The big head had the authority to raise their millage, and you had the authority to...
The township board is the only one that can levy. So, we go through our budget, we look what we need to run the police operations, and levy a special assessment for that amount.
So, basically, this plan, we're basically saying to the voters, trust us, right? Am I right on that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But, you know, that's what elections are for.
Right. So, right, so, as I said, when looking into this, it seemed very easy, but to explain that to taxpayers, that would be a hard process to do.
But we wouldn't be coming, we wouldn't be paying money, and these elections, these millage elections, cost money. 10, 15, 20,000 dollars a year for elections to renew millages. We wouldn't be spending that money every couple, every year, every two years. Like this, an election for a single millage, is that a good use of 10,000 dollars? I don't think so, but it's the way we have to do business, because we have three police millages that run on different cycles, we have two fire millages, and that assessment allows for police and fire. So, we have two fire millages that run on fire operating and fire equipment that are on different cycles. These would all be on one assessment mill, one assessment levy. So, it's, it's difficult to explain, but it makes for a much simpler funding mechanism.
Yeah, and then, just, I haven't seen any language for this, so I didn't find any samples of language for the second option, obviously. But the first option, we do have some language, basically, you're saying, we're going to raise our allocated mill back to what's allowed, if this amount raising this much money costs this much in the first year. So, like I said, we do not have to make this decision or have the millage to the county till August 15.
We only got two board meetings.
So, August 15 could be...
Let me be the devil's advocate. So, we're going to go in front of the public, and this is not for, yes, it's, we're going in front of the public, so we have the right, the police department, party, furniture village, and they say, no.
Right, so that's the option too, because now, what, what you're going to put the renewal on, or you don't, those are your...
What are the consequences of putting all your fish in this basket?
Oh, sure.
And public coming back and saying, because the general consensus out there right now, with most voters, especially in a community of this size, which is very heavily seen at all, the general consensus is, it's another tax. If you give me the opportunity to vote on another tax, I'm not going to, a new tax. I don't think we're going to have a problem maintaining our structure because the voters have already said, okay, you need to get rid of fire, but just the whole involved now, now, are we prepared, physical, have a consequence of them coming in and saying, huh?
Which, where would we be?
Right, no, so, let's just, let's just, let's just for simplicity, take the last one, because the, I just think, every time the schools have had something that was complicated, it was no. I mean, we know that, history tells us that. We could be the best ex-funaries in the world, we're not going to get that across the people. So, let's say our other option would be, put the renewal on for one mill, put the allocated, allocate on for...
The Headley override?
Headley override is the second mill. So, you'd have both of them on, if this fails, you still got your one mill renewal. Your renewal fail, I haven't seen it, but I'm not saying that's going to happen.
I'm not opposed to what we're attempting to do.
Oh, sure.
I think it's absolutely essential at some point in time, but I'm not sure that two board meetings were going to be a structure, structure and approach for a November election. And we could end up standing on a street corner and telling the police officers, you're going to have to ticket everybody because we need more.
Right, no, if we don't get a renewal, we're, like I said, if we don't, if we just get the renewal and don't get anything else when the same vote was...
I don't want to put this approach away.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's...
You know, but I'm very, very concerned that we're going to make a decision with two more board meetings, and that could come back and bite us right smack in the ass.
Well, this proposal is no more than sending me a book of pre-signed checks.
No, not that on the Headley.
Yes, this is the one that we're talking about, the five mills, and then, we can level up, we can levy up to 10 mills. I'm not prepared to allow this board, or any future board, to make a decision on their, on a board vote to increase taxes.
Oh, we can't, we still got to go in front of the board.
Yeah, that's a...
I'm saying, if it were to pass...
If it were to pass, you might as well just ask them to give you a book of pre-signed checks.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't trust this board, and I wouldn't trust any future board, I'm just being realistic, I would, I wouldn't do that to the people, I wouldn't even vote before them.
But we need, but, the point is...
We need money.
No, the point is, is that we've got a structure out there, with the way we're funding police and fire right now, that is, is very difficult to manage and operate, and it's requiring us to do not just bookkeeping end of it, but we're going out, having to pass all of these mills.
I understand.
And we're looking for a way around that, basically, all we're doing here. And I think if it's presented properly, I think most of the voters will go along with it, but I think it really needs a lot of...
What we're doing now is, there's a big chunk of general fund paying for police. You're aware of that, right? There's a big chunk of general...
We talked about it in the budget section.
And, and since we have police millages, we're not technically supposed to be funding the police out of general fund, technically. It hasn't been a problem, it hasn't been problematic, but that's what police millages are for, are for funding police, fire millages for fire. So, we're doing it...
It's been going on this way?
Pardon?
It's just been going on like this? We've had it on the general fund...
2009 or so, when, when things, when...
It's all property value.
It's all property value.
It's all property value.
Of always.
Police funding out of general fund?
Yeah.
Always, they want...
Because when they were...
It's been going on forever. There you go. Thank you very much.
Maybe, maybe it was just, it was just going unnoticed. That's right, because we brought the last one mill for police was just, I'm going to say a couple of years ago, so probably six.
Right, about five, yeah, five years ago, and it was just the four, just SEB's back to where...
So, in my, in my perfect bookkeeping world, we would have police millages funding police, general fund millages running township operations, fire millages running the fire department, it'd be cut and dry, people would know where their tax dollars are going. When the millages came for renewal, they'd know what they were voting on. They're, we're not, other than fire, it's not that way. So, this is a way of, this is...
Consolidating millages isn't, consolidating police millages is not a bad idea, but it's, it's that blank check.
I know, I know exactly. We, I know exactly how you feel, because people...
Who will make a suggestion here? When I'm listening to this, I don't think that there's any substantial disagreement among us on the fact that we have issues that need to be addressed. I think it was valid observation, that the amount of time we have to get to August 15 is probably short. I'm suggesting that what we do is maybe, as we have done for the past, you know, because this report may do, support a one-mill renewal that buys us time when nobody can contest it. With a year to work on this, we have a better opportunity to more fully understand it and decide how to properly present it to the public. I'd suggest that as the way of approaching this.
I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm not sure that. I think we do need to go for the Headley, just to have people tell us something. Because at some point in time, and probably during our term, if nothing changes, it's going to come back and bite us again, it's always. Now, we're bringing the fund balance for $200,000, we've got a couple million in fund balance. Should we use that as fund balance, or should it be a savings account? I'm not a big fan of savings account, that's my dad's money. If we need to use it, we need to use it. However, I do think that if we keep going in this direction, without misjudging this problem going forward, it's going to come back and bite us right smack in the ass. And at some point in time, we're not going to be able to, correct? So, I just, I do... So I, I just, I, I do think we should, just to put my end away, I think we should go for police millage renewal. And I do think we should see if we could get the public to agree to adjust it.
Because if you look at the next couple of years in '17, you can't do it because you got one, two, three, four renewals. You just get timing. And that's why it's.
There will never be a good tax.
19, there's nothing, so you'd have to have it by yourself. So this is, this is your next couple of years of what's.
Go ahead, Jim.
If you, I'm afraid if I'm wrong, we could put two millages on the balance, just like seven millages.
Yeah, we could put two on for November.
I mean, it usually happens. The renewal always passes on that. Anything new gets overturned.
That's kind of the track record.
I understand, well, put it on there, and if they throw it down, that, that could be a throwaway to some people when they vote.
Yeah, I, I hope they don't think they're leaving, but you're probably right.
It's going to cost 7, $73 a year on 250,000.
Now, it costs $73 more a year. Doesn't cost $73, it's what they're already paying us.
Yeah, it costs $73.
And that's, everything is always just this, just.
Thanks for going up, Senator.
And Headley thing's got to be fixed at the state level at some point. We're, as a community, in reasonably good shape because our property values are going up pretty well. The, the bickering started in the, the Build-Off communities, the Allen Parks, the Lincoln Parks. And my, my throwdown to them was, you make your community better so people want to live there. That's what I said to Warren Evans. You made people want to come to Wayne County. No, we need more taxes. Well, that's a good way to get people to move out of Wayne County. Okay, so as of 2014, 40 of the 43 communities in Wayne County lost population. As of the 2016 July, four communities had gained population. Lima City, Brownstown Township, Canton Township, and Huron Township have gained population. Everybody else lost some or several. So 39 of the 43. We're not moving in the right direction. I mean, a little bit, it was good for one community, but Rosio continues to, continues to lose population. If we officially go below 10,000, we drop to a lower tier in the statutory revenue sharing. How many dollars does make, I don't know. It takes us out of the safest community. But 10,000 should be the number we don't want to go below for a number of reasons.
Yeah, there's, there's consequences.
Yeah.
That automatically kick in without us doing anything, so dropping down. And this, in the packet, you had this language. What, what, it seems like.
That's just a renewal. That's just for a sample. That's all renewal. I just didn't put the, I didn't change the years, it was just what it was, I said.
Oh, it, because.
So there would be 17s or whatever.
It, it, no, it didn't say renewal. That was, that was, it, it says, shall we impose an increase?
You used the old language when it was.
Is this supposed to be a renewal? Is this supposed to be a renewal?
Yeah, village to maintain current. No, maybe it wasn't. I might have thrown with it.
Okay, so this is, this was supposed to be the renewal of the 1%.
A sample, yes. That is the, I'm sorry.
All right, because we're, we're talking.
Yep, no, no, no. It would say, yes, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, well, that's.
That was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't anger. Chief, do you have a?
I just want to, I'd like to speak just to my department alone. And I understand what Joe's trying to do, and I'm going through the same situation. Our department took off $200,000 debt since '09, '01. It's been gradually going down. So we're $200,000 in the hole than when we were in '08. That's 10 guys on my department. That's what it paid for. We reduced our staffing down to 25 guys. So think about this as a taxpayer, reduce 10 guys, went from 350 calls a year to 650, 700 calls a year. So there is some significant, as a board, and as a fire chief, and as our commission, our commissions have to be involved in this, this transformation of what you're going to do with the, the millages. But something has to be corrected because, like Ann said, the value is not going up enough because of Headley to compensate for what we've already lost. So, and I need to put five, six, seven, eight more guys on, but we're holding off. So, and, you know, you're, we're running a volunteer fire department. We ran them hard this weekend, 10 calls for the weekend.
Didn't you just put three guys on?
We put three on. I'm still, we're down to 23.
What you got?
I'm talking about Paderas. Yeah, love, he's actually three guys. But my point, I just want to make it clear to the board that I know what Ann's going through. She's through, because I keep telling her every year, I'm coming back. I'm going to start getting general fund. Because I need to put more, I'm six, we're lost, I'm.
That's, that's a big problem. As I said, due to agency authority, the, the, the members of the fire department who are up there, and there's, there's a considerable number of, are, do not have to make the volume of calls that the other guys make. And you're putting the burden on the.
And an older guy can't work the same as he is.
Oh, yeah. We got, we got.
Under you.
No, am I correct, old chief? But there's, and we're, we're looking at huge changes in our department. One of those is a two system here in the weekends. Another one is a revamp of our department out of volunteer system into a pay-down bond. Pay, part-time. We got guys at the station, no healthcare, no nothing. They're there to get paid, and that's it. So I can hire from off-island, I can hire from anywhere. But the problem with it, here's the issue, the legacy loss.
Let's wrap up the, the financial study session. We, we kind of know what a couple of options we're looking at. I don't see any movement at the state to, to take purge Headley because it's just so complicated. The whole, the new legis, new bunch of legislators just don't understand. And they've got other things, other paybacks they owe that got them elected, and that's where their focus for this year. Next year, it might be a different story. But I'll continue to press them. That needs to be fixed before we start looking at another one cent on the sales tax which comes up again and again, you know, increased taxes, et cetera.
Options where if something fails, you can do it again on your, like, your previous year. Which you could keep doing this, doing it. So it's a check.
So we will continue this discussion at another study session soon.